Regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh one P M. I'm going to ask Councilmember Montero to do the invocation today, please. And we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember David Patterson. Go ahead. Um, you're, can you unmute yourself, Councilmember Montero?
Sorry, I'm just mute. All right, good evening, everyone. Talking with bow head. Dear Lord, we come to you with grace and with your honor, we're going to conduct this meeting with civility and to make sure that our constituents will be proud of our decision and we doing this in your name, amen.
Amen.
All right, stand up, face the flag nearest you with your right hand of your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember colleagues. We appreciate that. Mister Clerk, uh, the roll call, please. It looks like we don't have any presentations today. Okay, not a problem. I don't, I'm not complaining.
So roll call, uh, Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Here.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Here, present. Okay, uh, Mister Clerk, uh, uh, do we have any communications?
Yeah, do you want me to go ahead and read the guidelines first?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Uh, pursuant to government code section five four nine, five four point three, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. And, uh, Mister Mayor, we received two emails regarding public comment for tonight's agenda, and we also have two speakers for tonight's oral communication.
Can you, can you give us the names and the context of those emails for the public's benefit so that they know what kind of a email it was and from who it came?
Yeah, I'll give you those after, yeah, to public comments.
So you can look at them and figure that out, okay?
Okay. Um, so first of all, um, so Diane is actually calling the first person right now.
Okay.
Oh, I think she's muted, hold on. Okay.
Okay, and we have Patricia Donaldson on the line.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I just would like to make the announcement that on November twenty third, we will be giving out three hundred and fifty turkeys and three hundred and fifty bags of groceries and three hundred and fifty pumpkin pies at one P M to low-income and homeless families with children at the Hawthorne Auto Square. And I just want to make sure that anyone that needs it, uh, they're able to come and just show proof that they're low-income or homeless and, uh, they'll be able to receive that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Go ahead.
I'm calling them right now. Go ahead, Mister Larson.
Hello, uh, my name is Steven Larson. Um, I am a longtime resident and I have, uh, friends and family been living in Hawthorne for decades, for many, many years. Um, I'm calling in today because I have great concerns about the growth of this city and how slow and stagnant with the development of the city. I have watched on the sidelines and voted because that's all I could do. But the folks that I voted for never kept their words. All they said was they want growth, but where's the growth? Are there people within the city council or the mayor that I voted for twice afraid of change or don't want Hawthorne to change? Going fast and change is the betterment of the city. We can't be afraid of change and we need to grow. Water that stands still goes stagnant. Hawthorne has been standing still for years, I mean, years. I mean, it's been an embarrassment driving down Hawthorne Boulevard and driving up and down Rosecrans to Imperial. The businesses are closed, businesses are dead, just dead. For example, like the mall, I mean, it's been, it's been closed for years. It's a, it's a total embarrassment. You know, I had to go to other cities like Inglewood, our next-door neighbor, to shop. I mean, what is the mayor doing to re- revitalize his mall? You guys are saying that we should shop in, shop in Hawthorne, but there, there's nowhere to shop. And second, I know there were franchise restaurants that wanted to open in this city, but they're all straight up denied. You know, these restaurant businesses could have brought sufficient, uh, revenue and growth to the city, but denied. They could have offered jobs to, you know, the people of Hawthorne. As for Measure C C, the ca- candidate's program, I mean, it was passed in November twenty twenty, but in order to bring revenue to the city, but it's been a year. All we have is a consultant and have no ordinance in place, nothing. I mean, what's the point of, of all of this? Hundreds and hundreds of meetings, nothing. Zero, zero ordinance, nothing. Other cities, big or small, have consultants and ordinance passed in like six to nine months from the date of the measure, but for Hawthorne, it's been a year and there has, nothing has been done, nothing. I want to ask the mayor.
Sir, you have fifteen, sir, you have fifteen seconds and please address your comments to the entire body.
I'm asking the mayor, why is there a delay compared to other cities? Is there a personal or political reason for this delay? Why is there so delay to the growth of our city?
Sir, you're out of time. Thank you for your call. That was the end of public comments. Um, the two emails were received for, were in support of item twenty-one. And they're from a Mister Moore and a Mister Eddie Martinez.
What is the nature of those?
They were in support for item twenty-one on tonight's agenda.
All right. All right, thank you to all the speakers for their opinion. Okay. All right, let's move on to the next item.
Mister Mayor, we, uh, before you close the oral communication, we should wait at least twenty seconds.
Uh, real quick question, did you get the name of some of those, uh, people who contacted us so we can contact them and, uh, give them some information they might not be aware of, uh, Mister City Clerk?
Yes, we do have their information.
Okay, yeah, we'll let them know, uh, the, the different things that have been happening in the city, so.
Just ten more seconds. That's thirty seconds. We could move forward, Mister Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. I have no more speakers. I declare oral commu- communications close order. Uh, Mister Clerk, the consent calendar, please.
Yes, Mister Mayor, there are no bids tonight. I have ten items on the consent calendar. They are items five, six, seven, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen for your consideration and approval. Item five, approval of city council minutes for the regular meetings of March ninth tw- twenty twenty-one and September twenty eighth twenty twenty-one. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item ten, resolution number eighty-three-ten, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing approving and ratifying the submittal of the F Y twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two State of California Office of Traffic Safety Ri- Ride to Live Motorcycle Education Grant Number M C two-two-zero-zero-seven. Item eleven, resolution number eight-three-one-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing approving and ratifying the submittal of the F Y twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two State of California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Step, Grant Number P T two-two-one-one. Item twelve, resolution number eight-three-one-five, resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty, and reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the city council, commissions, and committees of the city of Hawthorne for the thirty-day period beginning November ninth, twenty twenty-one through December ninth, twenty twenty-one, pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act and Assembly Bill Number three-sixty-one. Item thirteen, resolution number eight-three-one-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, expressing support for the Brand Huang Mendoza tra- uh, tripartisan land use initiative to amend Article eleven of the Constitution of the State of California to make zoning and land use community affairs and not of state interest. Item fourteen, resolution number eight-three-one-seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving a memorandum of understanding with community partners for a donation to the city to be used for community improvements, public services, or organizations designated by the city. Item fifteen, resolution number eight-three-one-eight, resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, dedicating November twenty twenty-one as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Item sixteen, resolution number eight-three-one-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of November as twenty-twenty-one as Native American Heritage Month in Hawthorne. Mister Mayor, that concludes the clerk's consent calendar. I have a motion to approve items five, six, seven, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Mayor, I would like to pull, I would like to pull ten, uh, thirteen and fourteen for discussion, please.
What about two, Councilmember, was that okay?
Thank you, that, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was the same thing?
Yes.
Pretty much, okay.
Uh, yeah, one item, but go ahead. I'll let, I'll let Councilmember Valentine speak first.
Yeah, that's fine. I will make a motion for items five, six, um, the minutes and everything else related to the uh, city clerk's consent calendar and items five, six, seven, eleven, twelve, fifteen, and sixteen. So once more, that's five, six, seven, eleven, twelve, fifteen, and sixteen. I make a motion on those.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
All right, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Um, discussion on item ten first, please. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to emphasize to the public that this is an important program. I urge all motorcycle riders to take advantage. This is, this has been instituted and continued because of so many traffic accidents involving motorcycles. And I want to thank the police department for being aggressive in seeking grants for this very important program. And please, all of you motorcycle riders in Hawthorne, take advantage of this and get this training. It's very important.
I'm, I make a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
I, uh, discussion on item thirteen, who goes first?
I.
Which one were you gonna talk about, Councilmember English?
Uh, I want fourteen.
All right, go ahead, uh, Mayor Proton on item thirteen.
All right, thank you. So this is the, um, the amendment of Article eleven of the Constitution that Bill Brand came and spoke, uh, Mayor Bill Bren came, came and spoke to us about two weeks ago. This is the one that would amend the state constitution and establish once and for all that when a state law conflicts with a county or city provision, plan, or regulation regarding zoning, development, or use of land, the local measure prevails over the conflicting state law. Um, and the initiative specifically protects voter-approved local measures that regulate zoning, development, or land use stating that these shall not be overturned or otherwise nullified by any legislative body. And I just want to emphasize also that some of the un- unintended consequences of the passage of these laws is that developers are aggressively going into neighborhoods now, single-family neighborhoods, to buy up property. And I'm going to have a, um, I will be having a presentation on that by a Realtor in the very near future. But this is not imagination. This is really happening. This is the, this is the unintended consequences of this kind of, this kind of, um, develop, this kind of, uh, statutory override of local, uh, local land use initiatives. So, um, I urge Californians to, uh, to support this initiative. Thank you to the council that we have, hopefully, that we will, we will vote to support this initiative, and I urge Californians to also support this initiative with your vote next year. So, thank you all, and with that, I move to, uh, approve Resolution eighty-three-sixteen.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Uh, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Councils voting yes, except for Councilmember Patterson and Councilmember Reyes English abstaining.
Okay, discussion on item fourteen, go ahead. Who goes first?
Uh, I'm, I, 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 I have some questions and I have some concerns. Uh, I'm looking at some of the language with regards to item fourteen and some of the things uh, from what that I remember have been changed, and so I want clarification to assure that I'm voting for something that I want. Uh, and the discussion was, was, was made with regards to, everybody can pull agenda item number fourteen, the agenda bill where it just, has a discussion, and it speaks specifically to the donation of a hundred and fifty thousand. It was to be provided for, um, the city's ultimately, uh, decision-making on to uh, where or how this money could be used. However, I want to make sure that this was not, uh, uh, and, uh, something that we agreed that would be used to rehabilitate some of our existing property. So, that's one. And then two, um, when we brought this item to the council a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, section three of a Resolution eighty-three-seventeen reads basically that it is the understanding of a commitment to expand the restaurant, and it's saying six-twenty-seven. I heard from Chris and I underst- I understood it to be six-fifty. So, I want to know, Darren, if you could help me understand how we're gonna assure that we get what we initially discussed.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, hi, this is Darren Embry, uh, resident of Los Angeles, uh, representing the community partners as identified in the resolution. Um, I guess I'll take the first one first. Let, help me understand what you're seeing, uh, Councilwoman, as far as the contribution to be handled by the city. Is there, what, what, could you clarify that question for me, please?
Yeah, it, 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 it reads that basically such as, such options would, would, would include rehabilitation of existing properties that the city owns, but that was not something we discussed, the hundred and fifty thousand to go towards. That was a separate discussion altogether. So, I want to make sure, I want to make sure, correct?
The M O U, it's basically there are three provisions that we're, uh, proposing to have City Council approve tonight. The first is hundred fifty thousand for nonprofit or city selection of, uh, whatever's charitable organizations, whatever the council decides to give to. The second item is the rehabilitation of city, uh, owned property, low-income housing properties. And then the third is the, the build-out of the restaurant at the Millennium. So, these are, those are three separate items.
No, I'm reading, I'm reading the agenda bill and, and I remember the discussion. And, and City Attorney Ki- Kim, I remember this hundred and fifty thousand was for City Council and it's gonna be brought back at a later time for City Council to decide how it's gonna be used.
It is.
The option was either use it to assist uh, organizations, groups, however, or we could use it to rehab, say for instance, seniors, housing, things like this, that can be utilized to assist people. It's all around community.
Yes.
But it was not, in my understanding, it was not, in my understanding, that it would be used to rehab city-owned property.
No, that, and that's not what it's saying. It's, it's, those are separate items. So, hundred fifty thousand is to be used for nonprofits and community organizations and charitable organization. However, the city council agreed to use it. Second is the community partners are agreeing to rehabilitate the city-owned property and analyze it. So, these are, those are separate. So, I think you're reading it.
It's saying that. I'm reading the discussion on the agenda bill.
Yes.
Saying it's gonna do three things, not one of three. Says it's gonna do all three.
Yes, and they're doing all three. And if you, the community partners wish to, that's, it's a colon, it's one I, then there's two I's.
But I don't think we're listening. On the back of this agenda bill.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, on the back of the agenda bill, it speaks to the fiscal impact. It's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
Okay, I'm talking about the hundred and fifty thousand not being used to rehab existing city properties.
And it's not. It, if you, the discussion narrative will list three items. And first is the hundred fifty thousand for nonprofits and charitable organizations, however, City Council decide to use that hundred fifty thousand. Second commitment from the community partners is to rehabilitate the city-owned properties. Then third is that they will build out the restaurant at the Millennium. Those are three separate. The fiscal, the, the direct fiscal impact is the hundred fifty thousand because there's no set amount for what the amount will be to rehabilitate the city-owned property. That has to be assessed first in terms of.
All I'm doing is reading the agenda bills. I'm going off of what you have here.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm reading.
Yes.
So, it doesn't give me three-line items. It doesn't say one is this, two is that, three is this. I'm reading fiscal impact on the back, a hundred and fifty thousand, that's one, not two, not three.
No, 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 I'm.
If there was three, I would have the numbers for all three.
The three is this in the narrative of the discussion? It says that the community partners wish to, colon, one, donate hundred fifty thousands to the city to be used by the city for community improvements, public services for nonprofits, and so on. Then number two, two small I's, is to analyze and provide assistance to the city to help address challenges of operating city-owned properties and so on. Then, three I's, number three, and it's an assist the city in building on and I, and operations of the restaurant space at the Millennium. The reason why the fiscal impact is only a hundred fifty thousand is because that's a set amount that's known to be contributed by the community partners.
So why did we include all the discussions that we've had with regards to the other two?
Well, they are, they are, that is part of the M O U. The, the number two.
There's no numbers. That's the whole point here, okay? There's no numbers.
This is Darren. I, may I respectfully try to assist?
Please.
Okay, the, the hundred and fifty is the only direct fiscal impact. The other two items are separate and apart from the fiscal impact. They are not a, uh, I mean, us building out our, our own or the, the J P A's property, the J P A's restaurant space, that is not a city number. That is not a fiscal impact to the city. But in the M O U, we follow through and with what we promised, which was to spend, you know, the appropriate amounts of money to make sure that we get a Class A operation in there.
Yeah, and the number, and the number provided.
That's not a, that's not a fiscal impact. And then if I could just step back and, and that's number three. So that's why it's not listed, if I'm correct, Mister City Attorney. That's why it's not listed in the fiscal impact section. And number two, we, we are going to analyze and figure out what the best path forward is for the city to address those drains on the general fund in the form of those prop- uh, city-owned properties. Again, that's, we don't know exactly what we're gonna recommend. We don't know what the city will want to do. There are just, you know, too many unknowns to actually put a number to a fiscal impact assessment, right? So, I, I mean, tell me if I'm getting something wrong, Mister City Attorney, but that's what I understand. The diff- distinction between fiscal impact and the other two items.
That's correct. That's my understanding as well.
I'm, I think Darren, what we're, we're missing here is the discussion in which we provided numbers, and I'm not seeing those numbers.
Well, the, 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 the numbers in the M O U for the restaurant build-out.
Yes, when we had a meeting, when we had a meeting, it was said six-fifty.
Is you, you, you speak to the fact that in the resolutions, say, six-twenty-seven?
It, it does, and it's probably not even gonna take that much, to be honest with you, but we, what we shared with the city was the amount that is identified and set aside for capital expenditures.
Yeah.
Capital improvement.
Up to six-fifty.
But it's, 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 I bet I'm just telling you, uh, respectfully, uh, Councilwoman, it's not gonna take, it's not gonna cost that much. We are going to do exactly what we promised we would do, which is provide an, a Class A operation with the grease traps in the restrooms and everything else that a Class A operation is gonna require there. It's, it, I, I, it, if it costs more than six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, I will be shocked, but we will pay for it. But it, it, that's why we shared with, with the city, the capex budget that includes the restaurant and other things. It's not gonna be more than six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand.
And if I can add an explanation to that, the J P A that's going to be running the Millennium, they have the interest to make sure that the restaurant is built out so they could collect as much rent as possible, which the collectively, the rent will be used to pay the bond obligations. So, this amount that you're seeing, six-twenty-seven thousand, has been flagged during the bond issuance to be used for further development. So, the interest of, because the city will not, uh, have ownership interest until fifteen years later.
No, I understand that. I understand that. My whole thing is, again, discussions and promises, and there's no numbers, and there's no numbers that match the discussion. That's my point. Plain and simple.
Respectfully, it, it did come up and we, we did make clear that it wasn't gonna require a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar expenditure to provide the specific items that, that were requested by council.
How soon are the other two items coming? Vaughn?
Sorry?
How's, Vaughn, how soon are the other two items coming to the council?
Well, what I'm, is that the discussion on the hundred and fifty thousand, um, the spending of that?
The two other items, the properties and the other, the, the properties, right? And then the item to come back to the council on deciding where the one-fifty goes?
Yes.
One of those items.
We have that table for December fourteenth.
In terms of the hundred fifty thousand and how the council decides to, to spend that, that would be, uh, at the next council meeting.
Okay, are we ha- are we hearing that? I thought we, we canceled the meeting, okay.
So, we're gonna, another speaker here?
Yes, I wanted to speak on, um.
Okay, you, uh, go ahead, uh, Mayor Proton and then Councilmember Patterson. Well, actually, Councilmember Patterson had his end up first.
No, because I was the one who said I wanted to speak on this initially.
Yeah, okay, then, that's fine, I understand. You know, uh, we'll give you that, uh, that, uh, that ability, and then Councilmember Patterson, that's right. Go ahead.
So, um, the, the, the question I had was just a question of, of confusion, a little bit of confusion. And I think Darren, you probably can answer this. Um, on the, uh, agenda item, it's. And I think Darren, you probably can answer this. Um, on the uh agenda item, it says, uh, little, little, three little I's. Assist the city in building out and identifying an operator or operators for the restaurant space. At the Millennium South Bay Apartment Building located at one, two, five, three O Crenshaw Boulevard in the city. So. I, I just wanna make sure, you're, it's, it says assist the city. It was my understanding. That you were going to find the operator and uh, and, and identify the operator for the restaurant space. This looks as if you may be looking at the city to do the identifying of the operator. That was not my understanding. I just want clarification on that.
No, you are one hundred percent correct and, and if it, it, it was worded that way, uh, uh, our apologies, but. No, that is, that is our responsibility to find the right operator that goes there. We would love to, you know, if there are some, you know, yeah, operators that the city would like to see there. Would like to make some introductions. I mean, we're, we're a hundred percent open to that, but. Us and our leasing brokers are already working on that effort now and. And we wanna make sure that we can come back before council with our heads held high, uh, that we met your expectations, you know, in. You know, three to six months, uh, with identifying the right operator for you.
If we have an op- if we have um a suggestion for you, are you the person to contact about that?
Yes, yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Okay.
My pleasure.
Do I have anybody else? Okay, uh, I make a motion? Roll call, vote please.
Uh, who was that second?
Montero. Yeah, actually, I made, yeah, it was Montero. He's, I could hear him.
Uh, okay, roll call, uh, Councilmember Montero?
Hi.
Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The voters elects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you, Councilmembers, item eighteen. Uh, now's the time, now's the time and place for item eighteen, which is a public hearing, go ahead.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance two, 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 five. Adopting a notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And amending title seventeen of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, chapter seventeen point two nine. Mixed commercial classification, seventeen point seven mixed use overlay zone and appendix B. Planning Department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
Are there any calls for this, or for all communications?
No, there was none.
Can you go ahead, uh, then, if that's the case, I declared the hearing closed order. Uh, ordinance number twenty two, twenty five, first reading, go ahead.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Amending chapter seventeen point two nine, mixed commercial classification, chapter seventeen point eight seven. Mixed used overlay zone and mix B, design guide for highest density residential use and mixed use development. Of title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code with respect to development standards for mixed use projects in the city of Hawthorne for introduction.
I'll introduce.
Okay, I'll get that over to Councilmember English, Councilwoman English. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, we have ordinance, item number twenty, can you go ahead and read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance, ordinance number two, 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 six, second reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending chapters eight point one six, eight point one seven A. Eight point one seven B, eight point one seven C, eight point one eight, fifteen point four zero. Fifteen point eight five to the city of Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding solid waste and making a determination of exemption under. SICA for adoption.
I have a question on the, on this.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. Number twenty, so um. And this question is for the city manager. How will the residents and businesses be made aware? Of the uh requirements of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Uh, city staff is working with Republic Services to message uh this information out. Uh, we're diligently working with. Uh, Republic Service having weekly meetings to distribute that information to residents. So we're working on strategic plan to make sure all residents and all businesses are informed. As uh leading up to this date, information has been mailed out to those businesses and residents and will follow with secondary uh correspondence.
Okay, so um, and.
And we can also.
Going to, are you going to have regular meetings? Cause thi- this is very difficult to, um, I mean. This is difficult material, I think, for the average person to figure out what their requirements are. So are there going to be? Trainings or how, how will, how will, you're, you're saying you're going to, you're going to work with Republic Services? Um, are they going to have trainings or who's going to, who's going to train the residents?
Uh, I can work with public, uh, our public work staff and Republic Services to uh explore if there's trainings or. Community meetings that we can have and I can provide an update at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause I certainly don't wanna start enforcing the ordinance against the residents until they understand what they have to do. So that's my concern.
Absolutely understood, so we will uh supply a report at the next meeting regarding the outreach that we're gonna uh partake in.
Thank you.
I move.
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Montero?
Hi.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The voter elects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item twenty one, uh, go ahead and read that, that's the uh regulation of smoking in the city, go ahead.
Yes, ordinance number two, 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 seven, first reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, repealing chapter eight point four eight. Regulation of smoking in city owned facilities and re adopting a new chapter eight point four eight. Secondhand smoke and smoking prohibition for introduction.
I move to introduce.
Okay, good.
Okay, so it's uh been moved to introduce. Okay, um. I'm going to ask though, um, Mister City Attorney, just for the benefit of the community, please read this. Uh, can, give us just a quick. Minute explanation on this, so that they will know what it entails.
So, um, currently, the, um, this is requested that is based on a directive by Councilwoman English. Uh, to have a more, more comprehensive smoking prohibition so that we can minimize secondhand. Um, smoking and, and the smoke and the dangers that it causes. Uh, there's plenty of on this, that secondhand smoke and the damage that it would cause, so. The current uh chapter eight point four eight, although of the city code, only prohibits smoking at a um. Buildings and facilities owned by the city. So this is more comprehensive, it would include. Uh, certain outdoor areas, common enclosed, common areas of uh, of multifamily units. Um, it would also include no smoking and outdoor dining events. Uh, outdoor public events and, and at public transit or station or, you know, the bus benches and whatnot. And of, of course, also the city properties. So these are um tailored and the, the ordinance also includes a section on. Requiring uh new apartment building owners to have these in the lease provisions so that they, they. Uh, the tenants are aware that the com- enclosed common areas smoking is uh prohibited.
Council, uh, real quick question on my behalf. Does this include uh both cigarette smoke, vaping and cannabis use?
All, all types of smoking is included.
Okay, thank you. Uh, who had their hand up first, Montero or Valentine, Councilmember or Mayor Protem?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So I guess I have a question about the comprehensiveness of the secondhand of this ordinance. How would this be en- enforced? We have a very small code enforcement staff as it is. They would be required to police outdoor public events, outdoor dining events. Um, service areas, bus stops, areas like that to um. Police um, the, the, to make sure that this ordinance is followed, is that correct?
Um, basically, right now, under this uh proposed ordinance for the first introduction is that. It would make it a, either a um, as a code violation, it would be either an infraction. Or some type of administrative citation or possibly as a misdemeanor level. Um, it, it, any ordinance that the, the city council adopts. The enforcement is pretty much goes the same way. I, there is no other way of. Uh, enforcing these type of prohibitive conduct other than through enforcement as those three areas. As either criminal action or a civil action. So I, the, the ordinance itself will not come up with a solution for enforcement other than that.
My concern is the, the, the very thin staff that we have as it is to enforce. Ordinances and to me. If, if our, our code enforcement officers should be used to enforce serious offenses and, and something like this. Is going to require um, the kind of effort that uh we, to me, we can't really afford to do it. Uh, whatever exposure there is to this kind of secondhand smoke. Outdoors especially, it's transitory, if the activity is outdoors. I, I would like to know if there's any real danger of someone ca- getting cancer from, from this kind of activity. I don't see, I don't see that the, I don't see that the, the. The, the risk of, of cancer is so great from this that it would require. That we expend the resources to enforce it. That's my, that's my position.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. May. Well, uh, these actually, you know, could be reinforced just by putting the signs up, right? Cause like we have in our parks right now say no, non-smoking, so it doesn't have to be policing uh for twenty four seven. So it's just a, a way to get people awareness of uh secondhand smoking. And, and we can put signs on those particularly uh, like the buildings or bus stop et cetera, et cetera. My question to the city attorney, I don't know if you can include it on this ordinance. Uh, because you, you talk about uh city buildings, but I want also the, the, the buildings that belongs to the. Chodos, you know, from the HUD money, from home funds, that they are also their public uh buildings. That uh, that affordable housing that come from the home fund and the HUD. That is not city owned, but is the community redeveloped uh programs. Like called the Chodos, right? You're familiar with that term?
Yes.
Yes, so if we can include that too in this ordinance, uh, so people not be smoking those uh apartment buildings also.
So.
Because they have public fund money.
If it's a uh multi-resident home, it is addressed in the common enclosed in the common areas. Um, if you are uh talking about actually the residential units. I would have to take, I would have to look into that and see if we can impose that kind of prohibition inside. One's private home, even though it is a government funded low income. So that would. And I think they have, they may have separate regulations in itself, I'm not too.
They're not private home because I think, uh, it cause it's like, almost like section eight house, right, for example?
Yes.
Uh, and, and those choices that is funding by the HUD and from, from the city home fund. So that's automatically, to me, they're public housing, right? So there is no distinguish uh, 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 among that.
And I don't know whether the HUD regulations also prohibit smoking inside those units or not. So those are, that's something that I did not look into when I was drafting this ordinance. Um, I could definitely look into that and I could, um, if the city council desires, I could reintroduce it after I looked into that. That, that issue.
Alright. I'd like, thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to support this as is. Um, and if we'd like to add additional things uh to it, uh, items, uh, we can do so. And I, I understand my colleague mentioned that uh, does this. Are, what are the risks, what are the effects, health effects on people and. For the CDC to write about it, the Centers for Disease Control to write about this and warn us that secondhand smoke is dangerous, um. Uh, I think it's uh important to heed their, uh, their advice to. Prevent the secondhand smoke from getting into the lungs of infants who are uh. Very susceptible to disease at a very young age. Um, there is also the risk for cardiovascular disease to occur. Uh, it increases the risk of developing heart disease. Um, and I see a number right here on the screen, actually, that it increases the risk of developing heart disease by about thirty percent, up to thirty percent. And secondhand smoke increases the risk for strokes up to thirty percent. Um, eight thousand deaths have been attributed to uh, to stroke. Uh, and strokes annually, so I mean, I think that's something worth considering. And then lung disease as well, lung cancer. Um, it's, it's a, it's, it's real, it's not imagined. And uh. I've known people that have passed away from lung cancer and uh, they haven't necessarily been smokers, but they've been around people who have been smokers, so. Um, I just think it's be kind of uh worth just going ahead and moving forward with this. Personally, um, I don't know what everybody else thinks. Who else is here, uh, wants to speak?
Um, I, yeah.
Would that be you, Councilmember English or Patterson?
I just, I just wanted to make mention that I thought, um. When Attorney Kim mentioned it would include a part, all apartment buildings, residents, you know, when they sign their leases. I thought it included all and all would be all apartments, whether they're Chodo or not, it's. The whole matter is, you know, it's not allowed. That, that's my understanding.
And it, that is, it's, it's the uh, the multi-unit residential housing.
Right, right.
Is defined as premises that contains at least two or more units that's rented or available to be rented. And not occupied by landlord of the premises, so it, it, it doesn't restrict the definition to just privately uh rented. It, it, it would also include, if it's multi-units, it would also include um, any multi-units, so.
Yes.
If there's more limitation in the definition.
Yes, and obviously, we've seen lots of commercials, we've seen lots of advertisements. Uh, from the Attorney General down to other, uh, you know, commercials where it speaks to. How smoke is uh, comes up through the walls, comes up through ventilation. Comes up through other ways and where you're not a smoker, you've got little ones. Obviously inhaling that, that's a concern and a danger, so. Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's give uh everybody else an opportunity. Um, I think uh, I think we should just go ahead and vote yes or no, but if, I, I don't.
It's just an introduction.
It's an introduction, yeah.
Yeah, you made the introduction, Mary.
Uh, yeah, I would vote for it right now, but go ahead, Patterson, go ahead.
I mean, I, I like to make some uh adjustments myself. I, I understand the importance of something like this, but. I'm looking at like in the um. The uh, um. The staff report and a couple of line items like outdoor dining, city properties. I don't have a problem with buildings, but like out, when you talk about parking lots, park stuff like that. Like, I, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with saying this, uh, prohibit outdoor venues. Um, from, from smoking. One, one thing I believe is people who smoke are gonna continue to smoke. Uh, it doesn't matter how much we tax cigarettes. Uh, I don't smoke myself, but I, I mean, you, you've seen. I've seen cigarettes go from two dollars a pack when I, you know, so working on was a liquor store when I was a kid. So they're like ten dollars a pack in some states and uh, doesn't stop people from smoking at all. And then one of my concerns is. That people are going to either break the law or find. Other places that are inconvenient for people to huddle up and smoke at anyway. Uh, so like people are at the park and they wanna smoke, they're not, they're not gonna not smoke. Uh, you know, they're gonna huddle up in a parking lot or huddle in the bathroom or huddle up somewhere. You know, you see, you see people smoking in negative thirty degree weather outside, right? Cause it's not gonna stop them. So I, I mean, I. Anyways, those are the, the issues that I would kinda consider removing the, the outdoor dining one. Uh, parking lots, parks. I, I, I'm not sure, you know, if somebody's smoking outside, how much it really affects anybody, but uh, and again, I could be wrong, but.
I, I just, let me respond to that. In, in terms of outdoor dining and public events, so if. If you are sitting at an outdoor table and eating and if you don't have a prohibition, you could have an outdoor. Table next to you and someone went maybe smoking and, you know, it, it's most likely you're gonna be able to. Smell that cigarette smoke, it's a secondhand smoke. And when you smell it, that means you're inhaling it, so. Um, uh, it, it depends on the specific outdoor dining scenario, but. For most part, I think the tables, the, the outdoor dining that I have experienced. scenario, but for most part, I think the tables, the, the outdoor dining that I have experienced, tables are fairly close so that you are gonna be able to smell that secondhand smoke.
Or maybe like require your restaurants, I, to allow them to identify a smoking section.
Yes. They could. And, and even if you have outdoor dining, for instance, uh the, the outdoor dining that we have experienced in the city is that you can be twenty feet, this ordinance says you, you, if you're twenty feet away from the dining areas, you may be able to smoke in the parking lot. It doesn't restrict park, uh smoking in private parking areas. So, but if there's dining, then this ordinance would prohibit that from smoking.
So if it brings park, uh smoking in city-owned parking lots, but not private parking lots?
There's, we, this does not regulate uh private parking lots. City, all own city facilities, the smoking will be prohibited, but not in private parking lot. It doesn't address that, no.
Alright, so we're almost ready to move on to the next one?
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
I, I, I just wanna clarify something or, or, yeah, go, I, go ahead.
Yeah, let's, let's just uh finish up. Go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we already prohibit smoking in our parks, right? But we know people still go there and smoke, but, but there is a sign that no smoking, you know, with, with the cigarette thing, but people continue to do that. So the other thing that I just wanna mention something uh personally. My mom died of lung cancer and she never smoked one cigarette in her life. She died because of the secondhand smoke. So that is where, Mr. Mayor, I will definitely vote yes on this neck, on, on, on December fourteenth.
Um, thank you. And um, I'm, I think that um the problem is in the parks. The problem is in some of these areas.
Yeah.
I mean, that reaches people that are around, so whether we can police it or not, it's, it's worth having it on the books. So in case somebody does see this being affected and there's a police around that they can enforce this, so. So I mean, look, I know there's different opinions on this, but uh, I think it's worth talking about all of them. Uh but yeah, I've known people who have passed because of this. Um but I know civil liberties are at stake, but you know, what's more important? The, the civil liberties or the health risks about this? I mean, there's that balancing act.
You make the same argument when it comes to uh mandatory vaccinations.
Yeah, okay, I mean, you're right, right, all that stuff, all that stuff. And I'm not ready to take a side on it, either one, but I just know that this is good. Can we move on, guys?
Okay, I just wanna say one more thing about that.
Go ahead and say that.
Okay, so um, based on the discussion, um I would, I would uh agree with council member Patterson on the outdoor issue. I would, I would support no smoking in the indoor areas. I would not support um no smoking in outdoor areas. I think the risk is very small in an outdoor area. Um, the, the, the portion which talks about service areas, outdoor dining, outdoor public events, public transit stations or stops, I would not support uh no smoking ordinances in those places. And, and, and of course, we already prohibited in the parks anyway, but um I don't, I don't see expanding it to uh, to outdoor areas. Because I really think the risk is very small and it's transitory. If you're, if you're in an outdoor area and there's somebody smoking, how long are you going to be? Uh, uh, you, you're not gonna be around them that long. A couple of minutes maybe, two minutes, five minutes. Um, I think the risk is very small and I think it's just um placing a burden on our, our enforcement staff, which uh, which is, which is really not necessary.
Okay.
Any of that, that's my position.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item. Um, this has been uh introd- a motion has been brought forth to introduce this. We'll have an opportunity to debate it at the next opportunity. Um, there wasn't, there wasn't enough votes to really pull it off the uh, off the day, uh off the agenda and table it, so uh we'll have a healthy discussion next time. Next, we have general matters, item twenty-three, please. Mister clerk, please read item twenty-three.
Uh amend section M of the employment agreement between city manager Vontray Norris and the city of Hawthorne. Recommended motion approved amendment to the city manager employment agreement between city of Hawthorne and Vontray Norris.
I move second roll call vote, please.
Council member Montero?
Aye.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
City manager's consent calendar. Thank you, Mister City Clerk. Next is item twenty-four, the city manager's consent calendar. Uh Mister City Manager, the agenda reflects that you have about four, a few items on here. Items number twenty-five and items twenty-seven to thirty-three on the consent calendar. Uh, there's no item twenty-six, it's been removed, so go ahead and introduce each one of them so we can vote on them.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Uh hundred twentieth, uh item twenty-five, hundred twenty street concerns. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file this report. Item twenty-seven, approve of a purchase order to South Bay Ford and South Bay Regional Authority, R C C, for the purchase of three vehicles. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve per- a purchase order to South Bay Ford and South Bay Regional Authority, R C C, for the purchase of three vehicles. Item twenty-eight, authorized authorization to accept HUD Home Investment Partnership, American Rescue Plan, Home, A R P Funds. Recommended motion, staff recommends that city council, one authorize the city to enter into the home investment partnerships. American Rescue Plan, uh Home ARP grant agree with the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for the period of November ninth, twenty twenty-one through September thirtieth, twenty thirty. To help create affordable housing and service for people experienced or a lack of experienced homelessness. Item two, authorize the city manager or designated to execute amend and keep record of documents necessary to administer the Home A R P Grant. Item twenty-nine, establish a professional service agreement with L D M Associates, I N C for the administration of C D, B G, and Home Programs. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council, item one, approve and amend professional service agreement with L D M Associates, I N C, L D M for the period of one year from seven thirteen, twenty twenty-one to six thirty, twenty twenty-two. To provide professional services necessary to administer and implement the C D, B G, and Home Investment Partnership Programs. Item two, authorize the city manager or designated to execute amend and keep records of documents necessary to administer and execute financial year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two professional service agreements with L D M. Item thirty, fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two blanket order, blanket purchase order for Catholic Charities of Los Angeles for one homeless service coordinator and approve the agreement with Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. Recommended motion, staff recommends that city council approve the purchase order of purchase order for Catholic Charities of Los Angeles for homeless coronation services in the amount not to six sixty thousand dollars. Approve the agreement with Catholic Charities of Los Angeles and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Item thirty-one, increase investments in one to five-year investments through multi-bank securities. Recommended motion, approve city treasurer request to increase investments through M B S and authorize certain uh destination city council offer, city of Hawthorne officer pursuant to a resolution eighty-ten to execute transfers up to three million dollars of the city's general fund to invest in fixed investments through M B S. Uh, this report serves to provide an overview of benefits, oh excuse me, item thirty-two. This report serves to provide an overview of the benefit of vacant property registration ordinance, V P R O in the city of Hawthorne. Recommended motion, the proceed, the proceeding is a brief description on how B P O, V P R O can potentially benefit the city of Hawthorne. Staff recommends the city council receive and file information and give direction to staff regarding drafting and implementing implementation of a vacant property registration program. Lastly, item thirty-three, progress payment number three in the amount of two hundred twenty thousand seven hundred fifty-one point five zero due to Martinez Brothers Landscaping Company, I N C of Silmar, California, Pahali Park Ramona Park Improvement Project, project number dash, or excuse me, number twenty dash zero six. Recommend motion, staff recommends that city council approves this progress payment number three to Martinez Landscaping Company, I N C of Silmar, California. That concludes my consent calendar, Mister Mayor.
I make a motion?
I can.
Okay. Roll call vote, please?
I'd like to pull thirty-one.
Um, we, we have a discussion before. Go ahead.
Sure, um. I believe that the city has, we have the resources to invest more money to our, our fixed uh income securities. However, I would like for there to be a uh a cash management policy that the city uses, so when there's future requests that can be referenced, right? It'll be something like, hey, per our cash bound management policy, uh certain amount of money needs to be kept in certain buckets, right? We're exceeding those buckets. Now we have X amount of money in excess that can go to a different bucket, right? So uh, you know, I've made this request before, um, I, I want there to be some kind of formal policy, some formal strategy that's used when making decisions. It's not just kinda like, hey, I think we got a little bit of extra money, let's, let's figure it out, but some kind of actual formula that's used to determine uh how much money needs to be kept liquid or how much should be moved over into a you know, a one, three, four, five year, you know, home, so.
And, and let me just explain the delay, uh councilman Patterson, and I, and I, I believe police is not here. If she is, and she could also speak up on this. We're dealing with a consultant, uh we're, we're negotiating a, with a consultant to come up with the cash management policies. We're just going back and forth with certain clauses of the consultant agreement with their attorneys, so.
What type of consultant?
Uh, it's a private consultant that a finance department has um recommended for cash management policies.
Why, why are we handling this now?
Um, that, all I know is that I have certain consultant agreement that was sent out that was being negotiated with the consultant's lawyers, basically.
I mean, that's fine, but it really doesn't make a lot of sense. You look at the fact that we have a finance director and a city treasurer. Uh, this is the job of those departments, right? And so it's financially, then we have to outsource like the work, like.
Yeah.
This is what those departments do. This is like the job.
Could I just say, I, I had, I had no part in this consultant. I didn't think it made any sense at all. I thought council member Patterson directed them to hire a consultant to help with cash management. I just.
No.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it made any sense at all. I had nothing to do with it. I don't think we need a deputy city treasurer. Um, so I just wanted to let everyone know, like I, I don't know where the disconnect is, but that's not coming from my direction. I don't think uh, having a consultant, having a consultant that moves money back and forth from like leaf to money market, which doesn't have hardly any difference. I mean, there's, there's a little bit. Um, I, I mean, just for me, I don't think it made any sense.
Well, I understand why you weren't consulted, because the way uh technically, according to government code, the city treasurer is tasked with the, the cash management. But in our city, all the treasurer's duties are delegated to the finance director, but our finance director doesn't do those things, so.
Well, I mean, the finances are.
I'm not finished. So a consultant now is being hired to advise on how to do those things because these duties aren't being done by anybody.
Okay, I just, I don't think that's a very accurate cha- characterization. First of all, there's, there's a lot of reserves. Lisa's doing a great job. Uh, there's also a person down in the department who's supposed to be doing, you know, licensing, so she's, she has all that doing. Like, if somebody comes in with a, you know, a heart attack and has a cold, it's like you wanna talk to the department head, see what they need in that department, you know, uh for them right then, you know, it's, that's really useful. You know, I don't, I don't think this idea that, you know, it's all messed up and, you know, city finances, it's just not true. I mean, we have all this, you know, reserves and I'm trying to put some more into the ladder. So uh, I just, I don't think it's accurate to say that because we don't have a, you know, somebody sweeping money back and forth all the time. All the things are chaos.
And let me, let me just interrupt here. Based on what's on the agenda, um I'm gonna ask that we move on and from cash management policies is something that is not on the agenda, and I think we're getting a little bit uh too into the details of that. We're actually going into certain personnel issues. So I, I request that we move on from uh discuss.
Personnel does not stand with what the jobs are.
Yes, I, I just request that we move on for, aside from what's on the agenda, on, on, under number thirty-one.
Okay, um, a vote. Councilor Montero, you wanna say quicker?
I don't wanna say nothing about, about uh thirty, thirty, thirty-one or thirty-four. Anyway, I just wanna bring it up, the attention of the public because uh the last meeting, we got a constituent calling about a hundred twenty street. So, so uh and uh, and I just wanna make notice and thanks to Public Works and the city manager to bring this item one twenty-four, uh one hundred twenty street uh for us to read. And because there is the, there is a very detailed report what they have done. So I just wanna make sure that the constituent will, will understand that uh our staff is aware what's going on on a hundred twentieth and they are making provision to correct some of those uh, uh, uh traffic violation that has been occurred over there. So I just wanna make sure that the, the constituent is aware that we received the report and uh, so just do your notice.
Okay, I, I concur with you. Roll call vote, please, on all this?
Can I just, real quick, Mayor? I'm sorry, I.
Yeah.
All I want, Vaughn, is if you could please uh ask item thirty Catholic charities to report out at the next council meeting on uh their program, the services that they've been administering, administering, administering. And I want to also, now I can't even talk tonight, um results of their, how many they've housed. I wanna see um their outreach. I wanna see what they've done in the last uh few months, if not uh six months, a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second your motion, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, okay. A roll call, roll call vote, excuse me, roll call vote, please?
Council member Montero?
Aye.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Uh, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Mister City Attorney, please proceed with introducing your item into the record.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, city attorney's consent calendar, we just have one item and that's a claim of Milton A Curry for personal injuries arising out of a trip and fall in a disabled parking, parking stall located on a private property. And our recommendation is to deny the claim.
Okay. Second. I second it. Roll call vote, please?
Councilor Montero?
Aye.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, um, councilor Montero, you have an item of the, for discussion, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, you know, we've been talking about, you know, promoting business in Hawthorne and we got some, especially due to this pandemic, uh you know, the, some of these businesses have been struggling. So I want us to use our, our uh social media and billboards and some other social media venues to promote maybe once a month uh shopping Hawthorne. I have to say that this idea, you know, didn't come from me. Uh, it came from uh Mister Chris Palmer from the planning department uh that uh other cities uh promote, you know, shop in, in their cities, you know, to, to bring uh sales tax revenue to the city. So uh we could probably come up with a, a weekend a month or a day a month to promote, say, shop Hawthorne, right? Tell people to shop in Hawthorne instead of going to El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, or Inglewood uh to shop in Hawthorne. So I just want for us, uh as a city, because now we have a, a very good social media platform. Uh, we have the, uh, that tronical billboard, we have these other uh, you know, uh places that we can promote to ask our resident to shop in Hawthorne, at, at, at least, you know, once a month, we can do that.
Sounds good. Thank you for the suggestion. Concur. Alright, thank you so much, sir. Um, next, we have item thirty-eight, elected officials' reports. We'll go ahead with uh city treasurer, Fallon. City treasurer Fallon, go ahead.
Hello, sorry, I was muted. Um, yeah, just uh, you know, um basically keeping an eye on the, on the funds and hopefully, you know, invest them uh this new amount uh that we set out. Uh, and other than that, it's been getting colder and uh, it's getting darker at night. That's all I have to report. Cheers.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mister City Clerk?
Thanks for the weather report, city treasurer. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank everyone for watching from home. Just have a couple of updates. Uh, the first one is um, last Saturday, we were able to provide food to over, to almost three hundred families. Uh, so I wanna thank all the volunteers and the American Heart Association.
For providing the produce, um I also want to thank Public Works for helping us with the trash bins. Uh we'll be skipping our next food drive that would be would have been scheduled on November twentieth. We'll be back on December fourth, um and on December fourth, we'll actually be providing an unwrapped Christmas toy for any kid who shows up. Um in regards to COVID nineteen, if you haven't, please get vaccinated, um because you could definitely save, you know, someone's life around you. Also, if you're eligible, please get your booster for information on locations to get vaccinated, or your booster, uh you can go to vaccinate L A county dot com. They have information on appointments and as well as walk-in locations. Uh yeah, and I hope everyone on this Zoom call, uh people watching from home have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Also, uh props to all of the people who are gonna be doing the the community cleanup this Saturday. Um I won't be there, be because we'll be celebrating my son's uh first birthday, Luca, so happy birthday, Luca.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, and that's that's all mine, thank you, everybody.
Uh Councilmember Ray's English, please.
Uh yes, hello, let's see. I'm ready to head out, Mayor, I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna thank the Moose Lodge, I stopped by for dinner, they had the, you know, they had the steak dinners on on Friday, so. Those are uh, you know, great steaks, thank you for the dinner, um thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for their Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce for their giveaway on the twenty third. Uh to the speakers today that spoke on uh a number of issues and concerns. Uh I do ask that you look back and and review some of our council meetings and how we're pushing hard to bring services and programs. And building out our city, so uh I respectfully um encourage you to do that as a resident. Uh I wanna speak to my Operation Gobble coming up on Monday, the twenty second at ten A M here at City Hall, this has been a long endeavor, some twelve years. Glad to partner with groups and organizations and provide turkeys, and if anybody knows, um there is a turkey shortage, so. Uh we're looking for turkeys, hunting for turkeys, and uh it's very difficult at this time. Also want to encourage um everyone to come out to the partnership launch of Telehealth on the seventeenth, here at City Hall at ten. Um I also wanna ask a couple of directives, uh check with uh if you would, please, and get uh clarification from Councilmember Montero. On Clean Power Alliance, we've had some, um I've had some emails with regards to renewables and what we're uh listed at currently, if we're thirty or. You know, higher, if we could go higher, they want us at a hundred percent, I don't know whether or not we could do that, that's a very costly costly endeavor. Uh again, uh Clean Power Alliance is a second uh energy company that is a nonprofit organization that provides energy to the community. Which uh we are a uh J J P A member, um and it is costly, however, unlike other. Uh electric companies, uh utility companies, they pay themselves first, this one does not, it gives back to the community through um community um. Um efforts in um benefits. Uh so I wanna check on that, uh wanna check on the current uh rate we're at. Um I would like to uh see how we're doing with our filming ordinance, please, we need to. Uh bring that filming ordinance to city uh to the council and get that passed once and for all, so we can continue uh bringing um. That workforce back to work, very important, um. I also want to. See how we could create an app, uh similar to Councilmember Montero's with regards to shopping local, it's like American Express, you know, using your. American Express credit card to shop local, mom and pop shops, I wanna see how the city of Hawthorne can create an app. A city app that could be downloaded and businesses can partner with us to provide discounts to the community. And I think this would be beneficial, whether it be a five percent, ten percent discount, just to encourage using the city business through uh app. That we could download and uh be our own, have our own app, that would be, I think, a a great, a great opportunity. Um I also wanna ask uh staff um to um. Study our communications policy, social media policy, uh and I want to also include elected officials, so if you could bring that back with regards to um. Policy uh around communications and social media and. Um the last two weeks, I've been working really hard in the city of L A for the last two weeks, Monday through Sunday. Uh literally six A six A M till seven P M with the big leak program, it's a uh funding money. Free money for residents in the city of Los Angeles, they provided a thousand dollars for the next twelve months, there was only gonna be three thousand people selected, it was a pilot project. Um I I there was over fifty nine thousand applicants, and so. Uh that just shows that the great, uh the need is great, and uh anything we could do to help uh families move along in in, you know. Their efforts to um get employed, uh get back to the norm in which we're still finding that. It's not quite that easy yet, so I know our city is doing everything to assist businesses when it comes to um. Uh helping businesses to get back to 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 their uh business and um operations, and I know we're doing still our. Assistance for renters, assisting those that can't provide uh rent, uh and there's other things that we're doing, and so. I just want to keep the momentum and let folks know in our community that we're working really hard, uh and we see and hear you. And we are aware that we still have a long way to go, and uh it's my hope in the next coming year. That uh it's only gonna get better, and um we hope that you can support us, and any suggestions you might have, please let us know, thank you.
Councilmember Patterson.
Uh thanks, Mister Mayor, first thing. I wanna first thank the community for um tuning in and uh for your public comment and to make your voice heard, I wanna thank the staff. For all your hard work that you do, uh Councilmember Racing just mentioned an app, it reminds me of a suggestion I had uh earlier in the year about. The city having its own app, uh I wanted to ask the city manager, kind of just looking at feasibility of that. My thoughts were um such an app will give, provide greater communication between the public and City Hall. Allow um ea- easier way to communicate directly to the officials to, let's say, report uh vandalism or. Um dumping, illegal dumping, or even maybe a large communication with police department, so. Uh I think that'd be a helpful uh tool, and not sure how feasible it is, and kind of looking for feasibility of that. Um graffiti, I wanna thank our graffiti team for the hard work that they do. I I've seen them out in the streets, hard at work, many day, many mornings, uh it's unfortunate. Uh I I've seen that, you know, there's one wall, I've seen graffitied, seems like every week, it's the same wall, there's new graffiti on it every week. And our our graffiti teams out covering that graffiti up, and then the next week, there's more graffiti, and it it has to be. Uh disheartening, right, to see your your hard work destroyed over and over again, and I want to uh commend their hard work for doing that. Uh let's see, last council meeting, the treasurer brought up a an idea of a manual. Um so there's a little bit of kind of understanding about the duties of that office, I just wanted to encourage him to. Do some of these ideas, I was treasurer, look at the government, government state code, the city municipal code, which outlines those duties. Ten treasurer conferences, about two or three treasurer conferences that discuss um how offices uh can be ran. I'll reach out to your colleagues in the area, we have everybody from Compton, Carson, Torrance. Gardena, El Segundo, I think, reach out to all these treasures over the years, they're all great people, uh some are full-time, some are part-time. And they they give you a little bit of idea of how their offices are run, um as well as uh. You speak to some of the uh investment professionals that that uh. Make recommendations to cities, right, that do municipal investing, and even check out some of the investment policies of other cities. You can kind of collect all information and put together a manual, it's a good idea for um just everybody in the public, everybody to know exactly what. What what the treasurer's duties are and and kind of what their standard operating procedures would be, um. Let's see. Economic development, I think we're all on the same page, I think that that's a very important um focus for our city, I I want to. Uh ask that the city participate in the upcoming I C S C conference. Um it's a conference that'll give us the opportunity to connect with retailers, businesses, um and really kind of tell our story. To entice some of these businesses to our city, I think one of the challenges, and all of us agree, like, one of the challenges about Hawthorne is our story's not. Getting out there appropriately, right, the businesses that locate to our city, many of them do very well, you know, we have two Costco's that do extremely well, we have. South Bay Ford, that's a top performer, um you know, the Starbucks in our city do very well, a lot of the businesses do very well in our city. Well in our city, I think a lot of these retailers uh aren't aware of that, right, and. Uh I think it'd be a great o- opportunity for us to be able to tell our story, connect with some uh retailers, and join some of our colleagues, some of our other cities, neighboring cities. We're gonna be out there as well, connecting retailers, telling their story, uh I know we participated that with with that in the past, I I think it 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 was uh. Quite beneficial, um I'm not an expert on this next subject, but I understand that Biden passed an infrastructure package. And there'd be some grant money available um for us to pursue, and so I want to ask the city manager to come up with some kind of strategy. How we'll be able to put together some competitive grant writing, uh to go pursue some of that infrastructure money that's gonna be available. Um and then lastly, uh I actually want to talk about uh council salaries. Not sure if the public knows, I was just, some of this for the public, uh what I'm about to say. Uh the city council, we're part-time elected officials, our city clerk and city treasurer are part-time elected officials, our compensation is set by. Government code, which is six hundred dollars per month, uh about seventy two hundred dollars per year, I know you guys are very impressed. Uh our city clerk and city treasurer, their compensation is ten thousand dollars per year, um. Get a couple of extra bucks, uh but also, and this is set by government code, and government code also allows for some cost of living increases. Throughout the years, but in order for the us to realize those, we have to do so by 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 ordinance. And so I want to ask the city manager, the attorney, to give their ordinance for the city council to be able to realize the cost of living increases that. Are uh identified by government code. And I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh Councilmember Montero.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, uh again, I wanna thank the public for turning to us to listen to uh to your constituent. And I wanna thank the staff uh for all the reports that the we receive and uh behind the scenes, so thank you for all your hard work. Uh so let me start with the Clean Power Alliance, and since actually I was going to mention Clean Power Alliance, uh so Miss English brought it up. Um so but uh actually, uh last week, uh we had a. A very good meeting that we evaluate the CEO, you know, the executive director and the attorneys. Uh so we gave them a contract, a three-year contract for the CEO and five-year contract for the attorney. Um Hawthorne, the reason that I have not bring up to the to our council, because the the whole council would have to vote. Uh to change our power, say, our power structure, right, because right now. The city of Hawthorne, we are on the lean power, because there is about of three of them, one hundred percent. Green, clean, and lean, so we are on the lean power, the lean is a lower, the lower score and the lower level. And it's last payment, because right now, we have about twenty four thousand residents that have account. With the Clean Power Alliance and three thousand seven hundred business. One hundred percent clean power would cost the residents a lot of money. And since Hawthorne is considered to be a low-income community. I have not brought up the issue to the city councils aside, if we wanna move Hawthorne from lean to clean or to the one hundred percent. Green, because. Since twenty nineteen, we have the pandemic, and a lot of people struggle to pay their utility bills. And and believe it or not, the Clean Power Alliance have gave two million dollar, they call it to the to the community care. To help people pay their bills, and Hawthorne was one of the communities that have benefit from those uh care program. Uh so it's something that maybe in the future, if we want to become a green city. And more people would like the one hundred percent green power, this council would have to vote. Yes or no for us to go from lean to uh one hundred percent. So I haven't brought it up, because like I said, it costs a lot of money, and 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 due to the pandemic, I don't think it's the right time for us to make that decision. So if the economy keep growing, the and this pandemic eventually disappears. And the people of Hawthorne, their immediate income, let's say, goes up. Then we would be able to make a decision, say, let's go one hundred percent green, but I think at this time. In my opinion, I would I would not recommend it for us to go to one hundred percent green, because it's a big burden to our constituent, okay? The other thing that actually, I wanna talk about, because actually, I wanna thank Miss Valentine for. For sending me to attend the South Bay Cock uh meeting, last last month. It was a very interesting study uh that this lady did about homeless. And about housing crisis around the world, right? Um and you know, and she gave us a very good statistic, uh for example, you know, homeless in in the U K. In England, two hundred sixty thousand people are homeless, Australia, a hundred sixteen thousand, Germany, eight hundred sixty thousand. U S A, of course, we have five hundred fifty thousand, now, L A County, right? Interesting statistic, we have about nine, need ninety thousand vacant homes in L A County. By the same time, we have fifty thousand people experience homeless, you know why? Because we got a lot of investors buying these homes and keep them empty. Not renting them, not selling them, but they're buying and they keep them, so. That's one of the problems that I think we have to deal with our legislature bodies in Sacramento and in D C. To change some of the law, because there is housing out there, but people are. Are just not renting them. Just imagine, L A County, we have ninety thousand vacant homes, but we still have fifty thousand people on the street. So that's just something to think about, the other thing that the South Bay Car talked about, and that this is for. Uh to help us out, uh cause I know Miss Valentine is very um in favor of the fiber network. So they mentioned about, if we do the fiber network, will actually help us control our traffic lights. And the traffic speed. By putting these fiber networks into our intersections and connect them to our signal lights, it will give us. Correct studies about how people are flying into those intersection, how much speed. And allow us to control even the lights. So that's something for us to think about, to talk about with Public Works and Electrical Engineering. About these fiber networks, not only just helping the wifi, but also can help us control the traffic, okay? So that was a good stuff that they did at the South Bay Car. Uh the other thing that I wanna commend the police department and Chief Ishi and all your. Other colleagues over there at the H P D uh for this newsletter. Because this is a tremendous piece of information that you guys put out there, and I hope we could have the money to send to all residents in Hawthorne. Because I think this is 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 a way to show how the Hawthorne Police Department is very involved in our community and keep us safe. So this is a tremendous shiving, and and my hat goes off to the H P D and the chief on your leadership. And I know you guys are doing tremendous work out there, as a matter of fact, yesterday, I saw. Uh Lieutenant Yushiba and other police officers on the corner of a hundred thirty and Prairie, in the in doing outreach. Uh and because that area there, uh we have a liquor store and and a convenience store that have some issues there, and they were right there all day. Talking to the residents, so I appreciate all the effort you're doing out there, um.
Councilmember Montero, you have another thirty seconds.
Okay, just to mention that uh Chief Ishi also sent us a letter about uh. This effort to eliminate funding for the metro police that that who patrols the subways. So I wanna give a directive to our city manager and our city attorney to 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 draft a letter similar to what she uh Shivishi sent us. Uh that uh this gentleman, Jean Harris, that sent to the counter supervisor Holly Mitchell. To oppose the elimination of the metro police, because if they do that. It would come to back to us, Hawthorne P D would be the one that they will call if there is a trouble on the subway. At aviation.
Yeah.
And 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 at the uh one oh five, so we don't want that to happen, we don't want to put more string into our police department, because they already have a lot of them called. We wanted the the station that receive more calls than anybody else, so please. So please, I want to send a letter to to the county and to the metro.
Councilwoman Montero, I already made that directive some time ago.
Okay, but I haven't.
A while back.
So uh, if we could go back on that and 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 search and create a new letter, appreciate it. Thank you. And at least just to say that Hawthorne President's Council is going to give gift card to Ralph and Food for Last for people to go buy their turkeys. But these cards will be distributed by the schools. So all the two hundred families is going to be selected by the schools. And I'll deliver the gift card to the schools to give to the families, so they can go buy their own turkey. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you all of you in December. Good night. Thank you.
There have a quick go back.
Okay, quick go back, real quick, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to remind the community, we have a community cleanup day this Saturday, uh, starts kicks off at eight AM. Uh, those who want to participate, want to volunteer, uh, we're meeting up at the Betty Ainsworth Center at eight. Or, you know, do our parts and making sure our community's clean. So, Mini Cleanup Day this Saturday, November thirteenth, eight AM, Betty Ainsworth Center, see you there.
And also, we have a shredder, shredder day and e-waste on the same day, from ten to twelve. Actually, from nine AM to one PM, paper shredder and e-waste at the parking lot of the Betty Ainswood, okay?
Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, the Hawthorne Business Expo uh twenty twenty-two is is uh, we're gearing up for that in on January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Our flyers have been printed and they're ready, and they will be going out to the businesses very soon. Um, and also, um, they'll be ready for distribution to the community. So if you're already in business or you're looking to start a business, Hawthorne Business Expo twenty twenty-two is for you. It's your opportunity to connect and network with local businesses and resources to help grow your business. And um, and it and attending the panel discussions and seminars will help educate you on the latest business trends and resources. Um, it will also provide you with tremendous networking opportunities for you to display your products and services. So we, this year, we're doing it uh for two days. Last year, we had it virtually. This year, I'm this year meaning twenty twenty-two in January, it will be for two days, January twenty-fifth and twenty and twenty and and uh, I'm twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Day one will be the panel discussion on our theme, revise, rebuild, and reconnect. And we will have business owners who are going to going to discuss how they face the challenges of the pandemic. Um, the seminars will be in the afternoon and several on several different topics, eight different topics, including practical cybersecurity, um, how to do business with Los Angeles World Airports, in insurance requirements for your business, financing your business, and other topics of of uh critically of interest for uh to businesses. Day two is the all-day exhibition, in which you will have an opportunity to exhibit your businesses. It's a tremendous networking opportunity. Um, it has traditionally been the most popular part of our event. The uh, the last time we had a had an event in person, we had approximately seventy businesses on exhibition at the ex- on the exhibition floor. So we're encouraging businesses, we were talking earlier about our encouragement to businesses. I encourage businesses to exhibit your uh, to exhibit at our expo. Um, and it's the op- the 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 event is free to the public. It's not free to the businesses if they exhibit, but it is free to the public. And we, of course, are soliciting sponsors and exhibitors. So this is our sixth Hawthorne Business Expo. We have had tremendous success with it. Um, last year was a little bit different because it was digital and um it was on Zoom. And um, I think the public felt as though they really missed something because the the networking opportunity was not there. This year, we're bringing it back. We're going to have that networking opportunity for you. And I encourage all of you to uh to um to participate. I want to, I want to, I want to segue into what was said earlier by a resident when he when he spoke at the um uh, I I mean, when he spoke, when when um concerning the slow growth of the city. I really think that this council has been very aggressive toward trying to help businesses grow. I know I certainly have. The Hawthorne Business Expo over the past six years, that has been our main purpose, to help businesses grow. We have done everything we can do to bring businesses into the city. There are other reasons, there are reasons why they haven't come in the in the numbers that we we would expect. But we have have had tremendous success with aerospace companies, larger companies like that. Um, what we need are restaurants. I I I agree that we need restaurants. And the speaker said that there were franchise restaurants that want to come into the city. And if that's the case, they should be, they should be encouraged to do so, because I certainly would support them. Have them contact me, please, by any, uh, if if you know of restaurants that want to come into the city, I'm very willing to entertain that request. Um, so, um, it's not true that this council is not being aggressive about trying to grow the city and trying to build uh an economic development capacity for the city. We certainly are doing whatever we can. The mall is something we have also worked on. So, um, the residents should rest assured that we do everything we can to encourage business. We want to have a business-friendly city, and we certainly encourage businesses to come into the city. And I think that's all I have. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and peaceful Thanksgiving, and uh we'll see you in December. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Mayor, can I go back of, uh, there's two things that I have to mention, please.
My God.
I'll be quick.
All right, please, please.
Look, um, there is a single lunch on on Thursday, November eighteen. But the lunch is not putting by the City of Hawthorne, it's by the Long Hawthorne Land Bell Minister Association. So we are not in charge, but the lunch is going to be there from eleven-thirty uh to one. At the Memorial Center is a single lunch that is hosted by the um Hawthorne Land Bell Minister Association, okay? And for us, the City of Hawthorne on November nineteen, we are going to distribute gift cards right here at City Hall, it's gonna be like a drive-through. Uh, maybe Vaughn can speak on that, uh, that we're going to distribute about four hundred gift card on November nineteen from ten AM to twelve PM, okay? It's a drive-through, so it's a city hall, and thanks to the uh hub money that came for COVID relief. So we're gonna use, uh, because there was some money for food, so we're gonna give uh uh four hundred gift cards. I believe it's twenty-five dollar each gift card for families to go buy turkey or any type of meat for the Thanksgiving, okay? So November nineteen from ten AM to twelve. But people have to call in to put their name on the list. It's not just show up, all right? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Right. I hope so, because you guys are all. It's okay. We have a short uh closed session, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, sure. Okay, good. So um, I want to thank the residents for attending this meeting. And uh, I think we're all working well, uh, great together as a city council. Um, good discourse, uh, good uh conversation. And we're able to see different aspects to each of the items that we have here, the different policy that we want to put forth. And uh, people move in different directions here on the council based on the disc- the conversations we have up here. So that's really good. And uh, but it's good that every single member of the council comes with their strong ideas. Uh, that being said, uh, I think uh um, Mr. City, Mr. City Attorney, do you have that policy? I want to put that on the uh as a presentation or either as in a discussion item with regards to limiting the number of directives at a city council meeting? Do you have that, Mr. City Clerk, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, that's in our ordinance, um, which you had asked me to look into. And that's two point zero six point two three zero. It's basically um limits the directives that a city council may give. It limits it to two directives per council meeting. And the directive has to be given to the city manager, and it has to be done during an open, regular council meeting.
Okay, so I just want to just highlight that, um, it's okay, this is the way it's been up to this point. But uh, I think we just need to make sure that we respect that policy and invoke that policy whenever needed. Uh, so could you just distribute that that po- distribute that policy and its wording to each of the council members? And bring it back at the the next council meeting for uh just presentation and quick uh discussion?
I can do that, or I could submit a legal confidential explaining that section of the ordinance.
How about a legal, I I would prefer a legal confidential then.
I'll do that.
There's no need to go through a, you know,
Yes.
public debate about it. It is what it is. Members of this council have voted on it, so if you could just do that, I think it's worth, there's no need to bring it up for everybody.
Sure.
A lot of respect to the council, and just so we could just adjust the way we approach the meetings, okay? Okay, thank you so much. In close sex, uh, so thank you all for being here. There's a lot of events. Uh, the holidays are upon us. There, we need to make sure that everybody still protects themselves with the masks. COVID is real, it affects people in different ways, maybe not everybody the same way. Some people, some people can be very uh weak, and it affects them in a positive uh, in 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 a strongly, a strong manner or in a light manner. Somebody could be very healthy and strong and muscular and very, you know, athletic. It could affect them in a strong manner or a light manner. So it just really depends. It is a real thing, so don't, let's not, uh, we still need to protect ourselves. The vaccinations are important, because without the vaccination, uh, the impact would be stronger. Um, so the vaccinations eliminate, uh, give you a protect, full protection, um, a very strong protection to the virus. So um, just need to make sure everybody just do, does their part. And uh, I may the government also make sure that they keep us safe when it comes to the vaccines, you know, being uh reviewed and being approved. So they need to do their job and stay on top of, you know, uh, work as efficiently as possible to make the community and the society feel co- uh comfortable that what they're putting in their bodies is safe. So, I mean, I understand those perspectives as well. So I really like the discussion on the tobacco and the secondhand smoke. It is a real situation, so I know we may have further debate. But uh, uh, secondhand smoke does kill, so it's very important that uh we just take that serious. And I also agree that there are a lot, California is an expensive place to be. Uh, and that's due to a lot of different factors. Um, employment is not at it, it's one of its highest points right now. Uh, and could be due to the COVID, and it could be maybe due to similar state, some things that our state government has done. So it's a mixture of things, so we just need to make sure that we do our part as a community to be able to uh take our state into a positive direction, okay? There's no need to address that speaker that spoke during oral communication. Uh, it's obvious that that was somebody that was uh given that information to discuss, uh, to attack the council. And I, for one, believe that our city council has done a great job in bringing a lot of, a lot of businesses to the city of Hawthorne. Proof positive is the increasing property values. That that's enough right there to tell you that our city is a desirable place to live. Uh, people want to come here and they want to pay a hefty price to be here. Medium home prices are between six hundred to seven hundred thousand. Maybe it's increased a little bit even, so. And there are a lot of businesses that are moving in. Uh, we're, maybe we do a bad job of uh giving the community every single business that opens, all the different projects that are in a pipeline, you know, maybe we should do a little bit more of that. But we, as a city council, are very comfortable and happy because we know what has been coming in to our city. And there's several high-profile businesses that have moved into the city. So um, I'm highly suspicious of who that individual was that was speaking. Um, sounded pretty staged to me, so it doesn't matter. Uh, so, an- anybody's free to speak. And Mr. City Clerk, um, we just can't have people anonymously calling without giving their names during oral communication. There's, there has to be a requirement, Mr. City Attorney, um, for us to be able to collect information to verify that it's a legitimate caller with a legitimate concern. And can you send, can you uh issue a legal confidential with regards to that, Mr. City Attorney? Just to make sure what the proper protocol is, uh, freedom of speech, First Amendment rights, and uh things that we can do just to make sure that it's not just anybody calling, that it's real uh residents or concerned individuals from around the community. Okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, but uh regardless, thanks to that individual for their opinion. Okay, so. Right?
He gave his name.
Did he give it, Mr. Larson?
Steven, Steven Larson.
Yes, Steven Larson, okay.
Yeah.
Steven Larson, okay, that's. Then that's good. So thank you, Mr. Larson, for speaking up. All right, in closed session tonight, we have item number thirty-nine, City Attorney Kim, please read the item into the record so we can break.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, agenda item number thirty-nine is a closed session on conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation is a significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subsection D two of section five four nine five six point nine of the California Government Code. It's one potential case.
All right, are there any communications regards to this? If not, I'll declare all communications closed ordered. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda.
May we have, may we have two minutes, Mayor?
Just a moment, let me finish, let me finish. Shame, 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 no. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at seven forty-six. Yes, two mi- two minutes for restroom breaks for everybody, and we are in recess now. Thank you.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can.
We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people.
Two, arm planks.
Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Watch, watchy-watch, watchy-watch, watch your hands. Scrub it while you sing the song. Wash, washy-wash, washy-wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hair so clean. Wash your hands. Reach out your elbows down. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus? Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, president of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
A meeting is called back to order at 8:20 PM. We have mandatory closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda listed as item number 39. City Attorney Kim, will you please provide a readout?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a report and status was provided to City Council. No reportable action was taken.
If not, if there's not any further comment from City Council staff?
Mr. Mayor!
What do you need?
I forgot to thank the Parks and Recs Department for the wonderful Halloween carnival that they did last week. It was a tremendous achievement from them. It was a lot of kids over there. And thanks again to the police department, the SpaceX, and the Parks and Recs for that beautiful Halloween carnival at the Memorial Center. So, thank you, Ron, expressed my gratitude. Thank you.
You guys are always doing a great job. Thank you.